I'm alive. I'd like to welcome everyone to the City of Middletown Planning Board meeting for the month of December. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the five United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, just some quick notes for our transcriptionist. Mr. Schumard is here tonight. Mr. Welch is here tonight. Absent this evening is Theron Atkins, Middletown Fire Department. And only other absentee would be Ms. Hewson on the planning board. Okay, we'll start off the evening with the approval of November the 3rd, 2021 Planning Board minutes. I mean, a motion, Mr. Numcheck, they need a second. Ms. Witt, discussion? Roll. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Numcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you. And of course, our note before we start our agenda, I'm going to point out that all first-time applicant appearances are considered a preliminary hearing. And the Planning Board may or may not choose to act or vote on those applications tonight. All right, on to our agenda. RDM 102 to 128 Dulson Avenue, looking for a six-month extension. Dear Ms. Two, our office is requesting a six-month extension for Planning Board approval for 102 to 128 Dulson Avenue due to our client working to secure financing for the project. Should you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact our office directly. Sincerely, Colliers Engineering and Design, CTPC. Doing business as major consulting in engineering, Jesse Coakley, PE. It's pretty standard. They're trying to get their financing, so they need to extend their approval from the Planning Board. I need a motion to accept their extension. Mr. Higby, second. Mr. Britto, discussion? Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Numcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next on the agenda is 24 to 26 North Street. I believe they're going to be online. Is that correct, Mr. Hanson?
That is correct. I have Mr. Feng online. I just need him to unmute himself, and he should be...
Okay, Mr. Feng, are you there? Ms. Hanson, is he there?
He is here. He just needs to unmute himself.
Can you let him know that somehow?
Yes, he should hear. Oh, hold on.
Hello, can you hear me?
Hello, sir?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Good evening. Could you just please state your name for the record and tell us your intentions, please?
Okay, this is Chen Feng. I'm the architect for the job.
Okay. Just a quick, first of all, ask for the mailings, Ms. Two. Okay, fine. I'm going to open the public hearing. Ms. Two, do we have any written comments? Anyone on the telephone? Ms. Hanson, do we have anyone online?
We do not.
And of course, anyone present, which is no one. Okay, quick background. 26 North Street brought a plan to the Planning Board. It's incomplete. It's not totally correct. They're here this evening to, we had them published, so they're going to open the public hearing, which we did, let the public address it. And then, the applicant already knows his architect has contacted us, spoke to us, that he has to revise the plans according to the DMU code. All right. Do you agree, sir?
Yes, I agree.
Okay, so he simply came remotely today to do just what he's doing right now. So, I'm going to open any questions or comments up to the board?
The applicant should make it the property available to our building inspector. He needs to go there. So you want to coordinate that with Mr. Welsh, so that he can do an onsite visit. Your plan should also do a complete outline of the building, so when you submit the plans, we know what's going on on each floor.
Let me tell you, the building inspector and the fire inspector, they went to the site already.
I didn't hear.
Let him discuss that with the building inspector, so that the information is clear to the Planning Board when we get the application. Okay? However, we can submit it either with a full site plan, or a narrative to the building inspector, and a full inspection of the property by the building inspector. This way, we'll know exactly what is taking place in the building. Do you understand that, sir?
Yeah, I understand.
Okay. So, does the board have any other comments? Okay, we're going to leave the public hearing open. I'm going to call for a motion to adjourn for future consideration, so that the applicant can go back and revise and meet with the city to get the proper square footage and apartment sizes. I need a motion. Mr. Madden, I need a second. Ms. Witt, discussion? Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Numcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you, sir. We'll see you in 30 days.
Bye-bye.
Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda, sorry. Next on the agenda, 308 to 310 North Street, Beauty Salon. Is the applicant here? Please step forward to the mic. You actually can, while you're in there, take your mask off, so you can speak into the mic, please?
Good evening, everyone.
Please introduce yourself.
My name is Maricela Saferino, and I've been doing business as a hairstylist for 21 years. And I want to open my, move my business to 308 North Street.
Okay. All right. Ms. Two, do we have our mailings?
You have an owner's endorsement?
And that's a yes. We have the mailings? Thank you. All right. Let me open the public hearing. Anyone from the public wishing to speak on this application, please step forward. Ms. Two, do we have any written comment? Anyone on the telephone? Ms. Hanson, do we have anyone online?
We do not.
Thank you. All right. And okay, just to clarify, I'm going to open the public hearing, and you might not see an owner's endorsement in the packet, but we did receive it today via email. We do have it, so that will be on record. We do have the owner's endorsement. Okay. I'm going to go to the board now for any questions or comments. Right now, hours of operation, just so you know, we're going to just clarify. I have Monday and Tuesday, 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. You'll be closed on Wednesdays. Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And on Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Those hours are correct?
Yes.
Thank you. There is the site plan. There's also, just so you know, as far as parking, there is street parking there also.
Licenses, they provided.
She provided her New York State license, cosmetology. Of course, you know that anyone else that works for you must have the same license, if they plan on doing any hair.
It's kind of family business. My daughter?
Okay.
She has, she has a cosmetology license too.
If she's going to work there, you will have to have a license for her?
Yes.
And supply that?
She does have a license.
Um, we're just, sorry, we're just waiting for it to come in the mail. I'm waiting to hear back from the license department, because I haven't gotten, been able to get it renewed. They're taking forever to give back to me about that.
That's fine. As soon as you get it, you should give it to us, or at least display it in your property.
Mr. Atkins, any concerns with the nails? Does that have to be vented, or?
Yeah, it has to be vented, but we go over that, but through the permitting process.
Thank you. Is there a rear entrance to this building?
No.
Is that a no?
There's just one. There's just one entrance and exit?
Uh, there's one main entrance, and on the side, there's another door.
This used to be G&amp;T Auto Parts. It's a very large building. It has a loading dock. It probably has at least one to two means of ingress and egress.
Are you renting the entire building?
We own, we just purchased the building, so we...
It's our building.
It's our building.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Good for you.
Thank you.
Excellent. Any other questions from the board, comments?
Hi.
Hi.
Welcome.
Thank you.
What will your business name be, and how many employees are you looking to have onsite?
It's like a family business, and...
It's M&amp;J Hair Salon Incorporated. That's the name.
M&amp;J?
Hair Salon.
Hair Salon, okay.
Incorporated, yep. So far, there would be two employees.
Just, just you two?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Is that part of the DMU?
Pardon me?
Is that part of the DMU?
No, it's not.
Okay. Did you know what you're going to be doing with signs and that type of thing? I know now, it's, you know, it still has the napalm and everything.
I'm planning to put a sign on the top of the building, so I don't know. I believe I need a permit for that, too.
Okay. We'll go back to the public hearing. Anyone present wishing to speak on this application, please step forward. Ms. Two, anyone on the telephone? Ms. Hanson, anyone online?
Not at this time.
Thank you. I'll give the board one more chance before I close the public hearing. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing and move on to a resolution.
Dear Chairman, before you do that, parking, do we have to waive parking, or do they have enough?
I don't think we have to, because they have three or four spots on the property. And then, as far as I know, the entire street has parking on both sides, actually, especially in front of their property.
Okay.
So I think it qualifies, right now anyway, unless they use the entire space someday, that might be a problem. But, no, I don't think we have to waive parking.
Should we make a note that if they wanted to add services, they needed, they would need to come back, certain services, they would need to come back here?
We could add that, but typically, if they do anything over and above their hair salon and nail salon, they would have to come back regardless.
Okay.
But...
That's what the application pending before the board is for nail and hair, so if they were to do anything else, they would have to come back. It is limited to nail and hair.
Right. To address Mr. Britto's question, though, but let's just say they plan on expanding their hair and nail salon. They would still have to come back to the board, is that correct?
What do you mean by expanding?
My point was just that they wanted to start including massages or anything like that, that they would have to come back. That was my only point.
Yes, they would.
Okay. On a resolution for 308 North Street, hair and nail salon, with the hours of operation being Monday and Tuesday, 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., closed on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Just to address the issue of massages, just because it was on the application, it had to do, pertain only to the chairs that are present in the waiting area. Okay?
Limited use to nail and hair salon.
And anyone working there would have to have that same New York State license to do cosmetology. And so, on the resolution also, subject to Middletown DPW and the City of Middletown Fire Department inspections, approvals, when necessary, approval of Commissioner of Public Works. The applicant will obtain all necessary permits and follow the permitting process, codes, ordinances of the City of Middletown and the State of New York, if applicable. If addition, in addition, if throughout any of the review process, the project is deemed to require bulk rate requirement tables, the applicant will supply said tables through an architect or engineer licensed in the State of New York. I need a motion. Mr. Madden, second. Mr. Britto, discussion? Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Numcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Get with the Middletown Building Department for your permits, and good luck.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, SB Dulson Realty LLC, 2 to 8 James P. Kelly Way. This is an ongoing project. We have a public hearing that's open already. Good to see you again.
Good evening, Ross Winglovitz, Engineering Properties. I've been here for you last month, a preliminary hearing, actually. I'm here this evening with Mario and Sergio Sardinia, SB Dulson Realty, and the franchisee for Dunkin' Donuts. At the last meeting, the board had set this for a public hearing. There were comments from Jeff that we had replied to, including some comments from the board, the board's attorney and the chairman. We submitted a revised set of plans for this evening's meeting. For the public, I'm assuming that if anybody's watching, it's out of that camera. Anthony, is that where...
I'm not sure where she, I believe that's it right there, though. Yep.
Okay.
It varies camera to camera.
Pardon me?
It varies camera to camera.
Okay. So hopefully, you can see that. If there's any public that is online, I can give a little brief outline of the project. The proposal is to locate a 3,300 square-foot Dunkin' Donuts at the corner of James P. Kelly Way and Dulson Avenue. This is going to be relocation of the current Dunkin' Donuts that's in, what I know is the Plate Dogs Plaza. The site is 6.2 acres. Part of it's in the town of Wayyanda, part of it's in the City of Middletown. The building itself and the majority of the parking will be in the City of Middletown. The city is lead agency in regards to Seeker. There are 47 parking spaces proposed. Access to the site is limited. It was a big concern of the DPW and the chair and the DOT. So we've limited access to right-in, right-out at two locations, one on Dulson Avenue and one on James P. Kelly Way. There'll be a dual drive-through. Part of this upgrade is a dual drive-through to approve, improve capacity of the drive-through. We can stack approximately 17 cars before it even backs up to our parking lot, which is a significant improvement over the existing Dunkin' Donuts. Water and sewer are provided by the city. There's two connection points. One will be in James P. Kelly Way for water, and the sewer main is on our side of the street in Dulson Avenue, so we'll be connecting there. There's been a complete drainage study for the site. Your engineer has reviewed it, had several comments. We just responded to those comments today, so I understand that there's no re-review at this point, because we just submitted today, but they're highly technical in manner. We had been to the town of Wayyanda originally regarding our initial application, filed an application there. The board deferred to this board as the lead agency for Seeker. We're waiting for DOT sign-off before we can go back to them to get their final approval on the site plan. And I'd be glad to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you. Before we go any further, though, I need to enter something into the record. It is a letter from the town.
Dear Chairman, do we have the mailings?
Don't forget, this is open.
No, it's not. This is our first, right?
Is this our first?
Yes.
I thought we, oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Do we have the mailings, Ms. Two? Thank you. In that case, I'm going to open the public hearing. Do we have any written comments, Ms. Two? No one on the telephone? Ms. Hanson, anyone online?
No one that wishes to speak at this time.
Thank you.
We do have a written comment that's from the law firm of Pavosa and Plotsky.
Correct.
They had emailed me the letter, so I've shared it with the chairman, who will read it onto the record.
Yes. As you know, I represent the Planning Board of the town of Wayyanda. This correspondence is sent on behalf of the board in regard to SB Dulson Realty LLC application for Dunkin' Donuts on James P. Kelly Way. The board is in receipt of the public hearing notice, as this project does require approval in the town of Wayyanda as well. The Wayyanda Planning Board asked that I send this correspondence and that it be added to the record of the public hearing. The Wayyanda Planning Board concurred with lead agency status of the City of Middletown. The board respectfully requests that the city require traffic study to be submitted to the town of Wayyanda for review, comment, and approval. The proposed project proposes an access road from Route 17M. There has been a great deal of recent development along the 17M corridor. And additionally, it is currently working with the New York State Department of Transportation along 17, Route 17M, and specifically, the 17M-Dulson Road-James P. Kelly Way intersection, to address the potential impacts and combined projects may have. The Wayyanda Town Planning Board would also like to put on the record that the applicant still has to receive approval from the town of Wayyanda for aspects of the project. The town of Wayyanda will require a SWIP and drainage study from the applicant. The Wayyanda Planning Board would appreciate if that was put in the public hearing record and also made a condition of future approval of the project. The Planning Board of the town of Wayyanda would greatly appreciate it, including this correspondence in the public hearing, and also appreciate your considerations of this comment. Please do not hesitate to comment with any questions. Very truly, Bravasso Plotsky Esquire, David Bravasso Esquire.
Pavosa.
Pavosa. So at your request, we added it to the record.
And for the record, I believe Mr. Winglovitz has sent out the SWIP and the traffic study to the board.
We have, yep. Rich made me wear that letter yesterday. I did provide them the initial traffic study, the follow-up study that analyzed the combined projects, as well as the SWIP that we just resubmitted to Jeffrey today. So they have all that information, but we will be appearing back before them once we hear from DOT.
Right. Okay. Mr. Schumard, do you have any, any issues going forward with this project that we need to address in a resolution?
The basic layout is similar in a lot of... The basic layout of the site plan is similar to many ways to a previous project that was proposed for the same site. And a lot of those details were hashed out then, and this, this plan carries them through. So, not, not a lot of controversy, I feel, with the access to the site. The traffic study that was done, and the letter from Colliers Engineering that was, that was submitted just, just recently, supports the traffic study that was done in April, and, and states that the, there were sufficient growth factored into that April study to account for the projected Middletown Commons, the Wingate Hotel, and a couple other projects that was cited that are not currently under our review. And as I state in my letter, we don't have any data to contradict that. It is probably a reasonable assumption. On the other hand, we all know that the intersection of Dulson Town Road, Dulson Avenue, and Kelly Way is, is a failed intersection in some ways. And traffic there is really unacceptable. It's just going to get worse. So, I mean, something will have to be done there, and it'll have to be, it will have to involve DOT, and it may involve the City of Middletown and the town of Wayyanda. And I just feel I had to mention that, because it's such an obvious problem. The SWIP, revised SWIP, as Ross stated, was just submitted, and it's, it'll be reviewed by our SWIP review engineer, and he should respond fairly, you know, fairly promptly on that. A landscaping plan was requested, and that is shortcoming. We did prepare a Part II and a Part III for the SEAF, and that's in anticipation of the board declaring lead agency. And it's a free review. And other than that, you know, we know that they met with the town of Wayyanda, and their comments seem to jive with the concerns that have been expressed here.
Just so everyone knows, we did declare lead agency quite a while ago, so the applicant could proceed with the DOT and ONR, and so they've been doing that. We, I will reread that lead agency resolution tonight, just to put it in the record, make sure everyone understands. Also, with Mr. Schumard's comments, I think we're prepared to declare a neg-deck. I'll read that into the record and have a motion for that tonight, too. And the EAF, Mr. Schumard is prepared, when it's completed, I will sign what needs to be signed, the Part III or the third page of it. Okay?
Have we seen the EAF yet?
Have we seen it?
Yeah.
We just got it recently revised, so you might not have seen it. It might not have been in your packet in time, but we, Mr. Schumard has, has definitely seen it, yes.
You have, Jeff?
Yes, I mean, we submitted the Part II and Part III for that.
What about the comments from the apartment of the Orange County? Did you get a chance to read their comments?
That was from the, that was from county, you say?
Yes.
When was that submitted?
This is May 11th, 2021.
Yeah, I think we reviewed that before, because we had, we had a response between then and this time.
Do we, if I read this right, it looks like they're still going to have more comments afterwards? Do we have to wait for that, or no?
Well, I think they reserve the right to.
They do, okay.
Part of the coordination.
We, according to that letter, we've addressed almost every issue that they had on there.
Okay.
The only issue that we might not have addressed fully would be the sidewalks, but they always ask us to put sidewalks in.
Well, I think you are.
We did actually add sidewalks.
Yeah, it's added. I read that.
Their request, the DOT.
Yes.
So there is a new sidewalk along Dulson Avenue.
And same thing with the town of Wayyanda letter. We have requested all those items, and they've sent them on. So I think we have done what we are supposed to do.
And the traffic study? Jeff, you, you agree with those comments on the traffic study?
I agree with them to the extent that we really don't have the, any data to refute it. The assumptions are reasonable. It's data-driven with traffic counts and things like that. And, you know, of course, we don't have our own traffic counts to reinforce or dispute that. So the assumptions are reasonable. The situation there is really... The situation there is really terrible at that one intersection.
And from a practical perspective, all of the traffic that goes to Dunkin's Donuts now through this intersection is still going to be there, right? So, we're not creating a bunch of new traffic. It's just going to relocate it. And the benefit is, there's no left turn, which there is now, out of there onto Dolson Avenue. We won't have that any longer, so that is an impact that goes away as part of the new project. And at the request of the board, we've limited everything to write-in, write-out, so we don't have any of those left-turn movements, which are the problematic movements, and we're capturing the traffic that's already existing. So, we don't believe it's a significant impact.
The only other item I have, it's kind of a minor one, is a while back, when we were having a conversation, the hours of operation were discussed, and we had a 4:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. daily. We have to just add it to the resolution. Is that still correct?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other board members? Any comments or questions, concerns?
Well, just so the board is aware, the entrance into the property off of, is it 17 or Dolson that is in Wayyanda? And that's how Wayyanda is involved in their approval on this project. So, it comes through there and back onto the city of Middletown.
That's why the final approval will also be subject to the town of Wayyanda's Planning Board approval also. But he's on track to do that already. We just have to include it in our resolution. All right. I'm going to do a little housekeeping first. Going to read off the lead agency resolution. Whereas, the city of Middletown Planning Board has received an application from S.B. Dolson Realty LLC, tax map designation, Section 64, Block 2, Lot 2.32, and located in the C3 Zone for a site plan and special use permit for the construction of a Dunkin' Donuts. The project is located at 2 to 8 James P. Kelly Way in the city of Middletown. Therefore, be it resolved that the city of Middletown Planning Board is declaring its intent to be lead agency with respect to the proposed action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, subject to the city engineer's final comments. And be it further resolved that the city of Middletown Planning Board is authorizing the applicant to distribute the lead agency coordination request in accordance with Article 8 of the Environmental Conservation Law and 6 NYCRR Part 617 to all interested and involved agencies. This will be filed by the city clerk, Mr. John Numcheck. I need a motion for lead agency. Mr. Higby, second by Mr. Numcheck. Discussion? Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Numcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Brito?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask the applicant a question?
Sure.
Ross, is there any other approvals that you're waiting on, other than the planning boards of city of Middletown and of Wayyanda?
DOT. DOT has provided initial comments. They asked us to add the sidewalk, provide some additional detail, and that's going back to them shortly.
And you're waiting on our final SWIP comments as well?
Correct.
How about the O&R?
There's no impact on the Orange and Maroclyn easement that's there, so we don't need any approval from them.
Okay. All right. A little more housekeeping. We have to do a negative declaration. And I'll need someone to make a motion for this. Mr. Brito, I need a second. Mr. Numcheck. On a motion of Mr. Brito and a second by Mr. Numcheck, the Planning Board, based on all of the evidence submitted by S.B. Dolson Realty LLC, seeking a site plan amendment and special use permit for the construction of a Dunkin' Donuts, the Planning Board makes the following determination with respect to the environmental significance of the proposed project located at 2 to 8 James P. Kelly Way in the city of Middletown, Section 64, Block 1, and 2.32 Lot. Based on a reasoned elaboration of the potential environmental impact of the project, and after a thorough review of the project's environmental elements by the city's engineer and Planning Board, the Planning Board hereby determines that there will be no significant environmental effect as a result of the completion of the proposed project, and by this resolution, making a negative declaration of environmental impact as that term is defined in the Environmental Conservation Law and in Part 617 of the New York Seeker Regulations filed by the city clerk, Mr. John Numcheck. We had a motion. Now, we need any discussion. I'll need a roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Numcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Brito?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Moving on to the final resolution. For S.B. Dolson Realty LLC, Dunkin' Donuts, 2 to 8 James P. Kelly Way. Based on our findings, that this will be subject to any further New York State Department of Transportation requirements, our Planning Board engineer requirements, and of course, subject to the Wayyanda Planning Board's approval. Subject to the city of Middletown DPW and city of Middletown Fire Department inspections, approvals, and when necessary, approval of the Commissioner of Public Works, the applicant will obtain all necessary permits and follow the permitting process, codes, and ordinances of the city of Middletown and the state of New York, if applicable. In addition, if throughout any of the review process, the project is deemed to require bulk requirement tables, the applicant will supply said tables through an architect or engineer licensed in the state of New York. I need a motion. Mr. Madden, I need a second. Ms. Witt? Discussion? Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Numcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Brito?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you very much for your time. We appreciate all your efforts in pulling this together for us.
And of course, I'd forgotten the resolution. You'll be open daily, 4:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. daily. Forgot to put that in. We'll put it in the minutes properly. And while we have a minute for our transcriptionist, Mr. Atkins is present this evening.
We thought you left, Mr. Winglevitz.
Making sure you're coming back.
I didn't want those two gentlemen to wait around, just in case. Good evening. Again, for the record, Ross Winglevitz, engineering and surveying properties. Here regarding 3660 Industrial LLC for a proposed site plan for a 72,000-square-foot warehouse on a 6.4-acre property. This is a redevelopment project. The site consisted of outdoor covered storage area, probably building materials at one point. You guys probably know better than me. Two buildings in the front. One is currently being used as a HVAC contractor and sales, and the other one is used as office space. Those will be connected to the warehouse. The potential could be that they could rent the office space with the warehouse, or it could be rented separately, but the intent is to make that ability available. We've been in several workshop meetings with the board, with Anthony, and have made several comments that was there on. We were here last month regarding the application, have made some revisions, including submitting a revised site plan addressing Jeff's comments, as well as revised stonework comments that are currently under review. Part of... One of the comments was regarding buffering for the residential properties, which is to the west. We've added an evergreen buffer all along there, even though this has always been industrial. We are encroaching slightly more, so we thought it was a reasonable request, so we've added evergreens along that entire property line to provide a buffer to those residential Parking was a subject of a lot of discussion. We've increased the parking significantly from the initial application, and I think that's it. We'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
First, I'm going to check on the mailings. Ms. Tu, we have the mailings for this project?
Yes.
Okay. We'll open the public hearing. Ms. Tu, do we have any written comments?
No.
Anyone on the telephone? Ms. Hanson, anyone online?
Not that wishes to speak at this time.
Anyone present? Okay. We'll move on to the board for comments, questions, and concerns. Mr. Madden?
Do you have an estimate of the proposed number of truck traffic that would be entering and exiting the property on a daily basis?
We do not, because we don't have a specific user. This is a spec building, so we're looking for users, so there's not a specific truck traffic generation number. We could certainly evaluate it based on averages and provide some information.
Just a note, where this parcel is, it is industrial drive, and everyone down there is a industrial, either manufacturing of that nature. But duly noted, you're concerned about the truck traffic.
And also approaching the property. I mean, are they coming from Mud Mills Road? Are they coming down North Street in the city of Middletown? North Street's a fairly narrow and congested street. Mud Mills Road is very residential in nature.
Yep.
Adding a lot of trucks could be adverse.
Yep.
There is the idling laws as well that they would have to comply with.
Unfortunately, our zoning allows industrial use.
And the idling issue was brought up, and we did provide a specific note, too, on the plan regarding that, to limit idling. I know there's laws, but also site plan enforcement will be available as well, as is indicated on the site plan.
Did you also add about truck... Is there a limit on when truck deliveries would be, since we do have residential homes in the back?
There is no current limit proposed, and again, I don't know until we have a specific user in mind when it would be. That is, like I said, an industrial area, and this property had been used as industrial in the past.
So, my question would be, since it's a spec building, would the person that occupies the building have to come back to the Planning Board for any approvals?
If it... Well, if they're using it for the approved use, then no.
No, okay. If they plan on doing something differently, they would have to come back.
That's correct.
Okay. And the specific use at this point in time is?
Warehouse.
Warehouse, yep.
Okay. Well, I want to make sure I put that in there, so that...
But is there hours of operation that we're putting on this?
I have none to put there.
Yeah, no, we wouldn't propose any. Yeah, because there could be several shifts, depending on operational capacity, similar to what's going on across the street with pop corners.
I think Ms. Witt has a question.
I just have a quick question.
I'm sorry.
So, on other projects, we've proposed that, like, the barrier of the tree line be like a certain height. What is your proposal as far as making them? Are you going to plant 20-foot or 10-foot? Or are you just planting saplings? Or what are you doing?
Yeah. Got what we put. So, is it 6-foot-high tree at planting, is what we're proposing? 6-foot-high, yep. Near the property line. Where we can, we've done a double-staggered row, and then a single row where the property to the west encroaches. We've provided a single row behind that.
Okay. There doesn't seem to be a lot of fill-in. 6-foot is not very tall to start with.
Correct, yeah. I mean, my understanding of it is that they will grow faster, and they're more likely to live if we don't go too large. If we go larger, then you have a lot of death, and they actually get stunted from transplanting. So, it ends up being kind of the optimal height, as far as transplanting these and having them grow and live.
Okay, but my question is, is that if you're trying to also buffer where the residential houses are, and they're starting at 6-foot, and there's no other barrier other than the saplings that are 6 feet, I mean, and you expect them to grow to 30 feet or so?
Ultimately, yeah, they'll grow to 40 feet, yep.
Right, that will take time, so...
Yep, and there currently is no barrier at all. I mean, those residential properties have cleared to the property line, and this has been open to the property line forever. I don't... That was how it existed and operated for many years.
Okay, so my thought would be maybe add some other... Beside the tree line, just...
Like an opaque fence or something you're looking for?
Something that would just really... Because, you know, you're right, abutting, as you know, where residential is, so that would just be my suggestion, if that's possible. Thank you.
Is there precedent for putting hours as parameters, so that they don't rent it to someone who then we have a problem with? Or just certain guidelines that they would have to follow for anyone who would want to rent it? Or is that not something that we do or have done? This is...
Well, the zone calls for no limitation.
No limitation?
No, because it's an industrial area. They could... Pop Corners runs two shifts, and, you know, I'm not sure if we can restrict the hours of operation if we don't know what it is, because there's nothing in the code dealing with the hours of operation.
Well, you could restrict it.
Are there any...
If the board chose.
I mean, what's the aggregate of the businesses there? Does everyone run all night long, or...
In this particular parcel here?
No, in the...
In the area.
In the industrial park there. Or is it just Pop Corners?
Salvage yard next door that runs...
Eight to three.
Normal business hour.
Yeah.
Pop Corners does two shifts.
Yeah, Pop Corners, I think, is the only one that does two shifts.
Everybody else is nine to five, eight to three?
Yeah, nine to five type people, yep.
Yeah, probably seven to...
Yep. Well, I'm not opposed to, if you come up with a reasonable window. I don't know what Pop Corners runs, but, you know, if you figure two shifts, if you want to say, you know...
It would be seven to 11.
I mean, we have noise ordinance... We have the noise ordinance laws, so, I mean, we're protected by that.
Correct. Same thing with the trucks, with the idling and things of that nature. You know, I mean, Mr. Madden brings up a good point. It happens to travel through a residential area. Unfortunately, in the city of Middletown, that happens a lot. We have an industrial area where we have to pass through a residential area. This nature of the beast. If you want to set it up for like a two-shift window, Ross, that would be appropriate, I think?
Yeah, I mean, what I was thinking is, I could go back to my client, but the answer's going to be, we wouldn't want any restrictions. What I was thinking is, we could do a 7:00 a.m. to 11:00, and if they wanted to come back, they could always come back to this board and say, hey, we've been great neighbors. We've been operating. We want a third shift or something, so if that makes sense.
Is that reasonable for the board? 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m.? That gives them a two-shift type of situation, which would be fairly reasonable, even going through the residential areas. through the residential areas.
Mr. Schumard, have you reviewed, or you have any comments?
I did submit a comment letter. I just noted that the addition of the white pine screening in the back, white pines are pretty hardy trees, and they grow over time really, really tall. And I don't think you'd want a tall tree near a building and everything, but I think this is an isolated area, and probably it's appropriate. My concern, as we just listened to the discussion with Ms. Witt, is that this area, like a lot of areas in Middletown, have a lot of deer. And when the winters get tough, deer will eat anything. They will eat evergreens. And they're likely to chomp on the, on the, on the evergreens. If the evergreens, an individual tree or trees, is damaged or dies, or diseased for any reason, I think it would be reasonable to ask that there be provisions for replacing that tree. And that should, that should be on the applicant, I believe.
We've done that in the past with RDM down on Dulson Avenue, that if anything along Dulson Avenue or any greenery dies, or even, you know, whatever takes place, that they replace it in kind. In perpetuity. So whoever owns the property going forward, that's just the way it is. They have to replace it.
And that should be on the landscape plan.
In addition, just a question for Ross. Did you happen to forward the site plans to Ron Rink?
To Ron?
He's the guy in CPL who does the SWIP reviews. I sent you an email on that. I don't know if you got it or not. I sent a scan of your comment letter with your SWIP responses, but he would need to see the plans in order to make any sense of that.
Okay, sure, we can send that to you, yep.
So that wasn't done yet?
No, so I, yeah, so we forwarded everything. There was a plan. We submitted everything. Well, we initially submitted the plan, the SWIP, the response letter, both to your comments and Ron's comments. So that didn't get sent out to him when we sent that.
All right, I can, all right, I guess, yeah, you did send, you did send the plans back and whenever.
It was about two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago, all right, so I can...
The SWIP and a response to his comments as well.
I can forward the, I can forward those plans, that's okay. He has the comments, he just doesn't have the plans.
Okay.
I'll take care of that.
He has my response, our responses in our SWIP, but he's missing the plans. We can sure send it to him directly.
We can make it subject to SWIP approval.
Pardon?
We can make it subject to SWIP approval?
Yes, yes. One, one really, really minor comment. There was an addition of a fence symbol on Sheet C-103. But the plans look to me like they have two different line-type symbols for fence, but only one in the legend, if I'm reading the plan correctly.
Here's one with the X's and one with the O's.
Yeah, I think I put the proposed chain link fence in the legend, but there is an existing chain link fence. So the property is actually entirely surrounded by a chain link fence currently.
Okay.
So we can add that to the legend, the existing chain link fence, but there is a chain link fence around the entire property.
And Ross, is that behind the residential ones, too?
Yes, as well, yep.
There's fence there, too? Also, what about the lighting plan? Is that lighting plan is not shining on any of those residential?
Correct, no. These are all shielded fixtures. There's a lighting plan in the back showing that the levels diminish at the property line.
Okay.
Aaron, have you reviewed?
I have. Everything's good.
Sorry, Jeff.
And I gave him comments. Have to mention it. Everything's been addressed on my side.
Sorry, Jeff.
The only thing is, there was a situation on the one sideline where there were several catch basins, and one, one, one catch basin was lower than the others, but yet that wasn't an outlet, there was an inlet. And Ross indicated they made some field investigations, but they didn't, they couldn't adequately define what the situation was, so they're going to have the contractor do it. So that was just a, just an observation.
Yeah, there's drainage all right along the street, and we actually had the DPW go clean it out because we couldn't identify the inverts on it. We did that, and we still had a problem telling where it goes. We know that the stowmate from Pepsi pond outlets actually onto our property across industrial, so Pepsi actually comes our way from their pond. And it all goes to a central location right behind this building. That's the existing condition, and that'll be the future condition as well. We just don't know exactly how they connect in between a few of those spots, but we know where it ends up.
Okay.
And I was out there when we had the flood a couple of weeks ago, three, four weeks ago, when it was flooding. And this was actually high try. And I went around the corner, and it was, I had to drive through two foot of water to get my appointment.
So, Mr. Schumard, are you confident that we can declare a neg, a neg deck this evening?
I am. I sent a proposed...
I sent a proposed Part II and Part III and indicated, that is my opinion.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So for some housekeeping purposes, we're going to declare lead agency first, okay? Whereas the City of Middletown Planning Board has received an application from 36-60 Industrial Drive LLC, tax map designation, Section 5, Block 1, Lot 4.1, and located in the I-2 Zone for a site plan amendment and special use permit for the construction of a warehouse expansion. The project is located at 36-60 Industrial Place in the City of Middletown. Therefore, be it resolved that the City of Middletown Planning Board is declaring its intent to be lead agency with respect to proposed action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, and be it further resolved that the City of Middletown Planning Board is authorized in the applicant to distribute the lead agency coordination request in accordance with Article 8 of the Environmental Conservation Law and 6 NYCRR Part 617 to all interested and involved agencies to be filed with the city clerk, Mr. John Numcheck. I need a motion. Mr. Britto? I need a second. Ms. Witt? Discussion. Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Numcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Higbee?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Mr. Chairman, the public hearing is still open?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll leave it open to the very end, and we'll close it up. Next, I'm going to need a motion. We're going to declare a negative declaration on a motion. Need a motion for it. Mr. Britto, I need a second. Mr. Numcheck? On a motion of Mr. Britto and second by Mr. Numcheck, the planning board, based upon all of the evidence submitted by 36-60 Industrial Drive LLC, seeking a site plan amendment and special use permit for the construction of a warehouse. The planning board makes the following determination with respect to the environmental significance of the proposed project located at 36-60 Industrial Place in the City of Middletown, Section 5, Block 1, and Lot 4.1. Based upon a reasoned elaboration of the potential environmental impact of the project, and after a thorough review of the project's environmental elements by the city's engineer and planning board, the planning board hereby determines that there will be no significant environmental effect as a result of the completion of this proposed project. And by this resolution, making a negative declaration of environmental impact, as that term is defined in the Environmental Conservation Law and in Part 617 of the New York SECRE Regulations filed by, to be filed by the city clerk of the City of Middletown, Mr. John Numcheck. Okay, on that motion, discussion. Sorry. That's all right. Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Numcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Higbee?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So all that's out of the way. And the one thing, while the public hearing is open, I want to read in the City of Middletown's position on encroachment, okay? If you did or did not notice, on the plan, there is some encroachments by the residents on the back area that the screening is going in. Everyone knows about it. The applicant's addressed it. But for the City of Middletown, for the record, the City of Middletown Planning Board acknowledges that encroachments are noticed on the site plan provided by the applicant. The city is not endorsing or approving, and/or approving, said encroachments. But that is a landowner matter that the respective parties could address should they feel the need. So basically, the City of Middletown has nothing to do with your encroachments. We know they're there, but they're your problem.
And we did point it out to our client. I think he just was sending a letter to that neighbor, putting him on notice that it's an encroachment. I think it's been, it's been civil. There's been no issues, so they're just going to leave it as is unless there's a problem.
That's fine.
Yep.
We just had to make that statement for the record.
Absolutely. Makes sense.
Now, Mr. Chairman, Ms. Witt brought up a issue with the back and potential fencing or additional screening. I don't know how the board feels about that.
Aside from, I don't know what size fence he would put up besides a six-foot fence. I mean, he could put up an eight-foot fence. The zone does allow for it, if that's what the board is looking at, if they feel that the screening, tree screening, is not sufficient. We can have that discussion.
What's the height of the fence there now?
I think it's like a six-foot chain link fence.
It's six-foot chain link?
I mean, we've asked them to add the tree screening, because there always was a six-foot chain link fence. I don't know how much more you want to add in a residential area. In a couple of years, they'll probably be six, seven, eight feet tall. I don't know how much more you want to add or do. I mean, I'm up to the board. I'm open for discussion.
I was satisfied with Mr. Schumard's response in putting it into the record that they would be required to replace any trees that, you know...
I'll put that in the resolution, yes?
I agree with that. I agree with that, too.
So it sounds like the fence may be asking for a little bit more than we need to do, maybe, being an industrial slash residential area. But anybody else?
And I would say, put in the plan that it's a minimum of six-foot trees that you plant, that they're not, you know...
I think he, is that on your plan?
Yep, that's on the plan, and if I be maintained, absolutely, we'll add that, too.
Okay. And when I say maintain the tree fence or the tree line, it'll be, you know, in kind. In other words, you know if they plant a six-foot tree, they have to put at least a six-foot tree back?
Absolutely.
They know that. And we'll make it for perpetuity. Couldn't get that out. This way, no matter who owns the property, they have to maintain the tree line, okay? Mr. Britto, you okay with that? Ms. Witt, I know it's not exactly what you want, but, okay? All right. That's fine.
And coupled with limiting the hours should help as well.
All right. Going back to the public hearing. Ms. Hanson, do we have anyone online?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Tu has no one on the phone. So I'm going to close the public hearing. And once again, just go back to the board for last comments, concerns, questions. Nothing? Okay. Let's try to put this all in a resolution. Resolution for 36-60 Industrial Place, a warehouse expansion of 72,000 square feet, which will include offices, warehouse, outdoor storage. And there's also, just so everyone knows, there's other businesses on the property.
Correct.
And they're going to be maintained there.
Yes.
Okay. That's fine. Hours of operation will be 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. The tree line, as has been established, will be maintained in kind for perpetuity.
And reflected in the plans.
As reflected in the plans, yes. Also, subject to final SWIP approval and site, site SWIP approval. Also, you may have to be subject to the Orange County Planning Department. Their comments and recommendations, they have not yet responded. They may, or they may not. But we'll have to leave that open and, so that you can review that.
Okay.
Okay? And typically, we're subject to the City of Middletown DPW and City of Middletown Fire Department inspections, approvals, and when necessary, approval of the Commissioner of Public Works. The applicant will obtain all necessary permits and follow the permitting process, codes, and ordinances of the City of Middletown and the State of New York if applicable. In addition, if throughout any of the review process, the project is deemed to require bulk requirement tables, the applicant will supply said tables through an architect or engineer licensed in the state of New York. Need a motion. Mr. Britto? I need a second. Ms. Witt? Discussion. Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Numcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Higbee?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Appreciate all your efforts.
That being said, motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all.
Thank you.